Hi, Marquis Harris Dawson. So we do have a quorum. Mr. Clerk, why don't you run through the agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning, back at you.
Item number one is City Attorney Report and Ordinances Relative to Adding Article Four to Chapter Ten of the Los Angeles Municipal Code to Regulate Commercial Cannabis Activities in the City of Los Angeles and Establishing Rules and Regulations. Item number two is a report from Los Angeles City Planning Commission and Proposed Ordinance Relative to Amending the Los Angeles Municipal Code Establishing Location Restrictions for Commercial Cannabis Activity Consistent with Measure M Adopted by the Los Angeles Voters on March 7, 2017, Including Recommendations and Findings on Related Environmental Clearances and SEQA Exemption. Item number three is Chief Legislative Analyst and City Administrative Officer Reports and Motion Harris Dawson Price Wezar Relative to Social Equity Issues Related to Cannabis Regulations. Item number four is Chief Legislative Analyst's Report Relative to the 2018 Council Recession Schedule. And item number five is Chief Legislative Analyst's Report and Revised Resolution Relative to Establishing the City's Position on H.R. 3107 and S. 1447, the Diesel Admissions Reduction Act of 2017, which would reauthorize the Federal Diesel Admissions Reduction Program until 2022.
Okay, thank you. So I believe there are no cards on items four and five, so why don't we...
Sir, we do have cards on all items.
Okay. So, uh, let me see the cards on four and five. In fact, you know what? We'll just deal with that later. Why don't we take up items one, two, and three together? And so I'm gonna ask for, uh, the planning staff, the department staff, and maybe reps from the City Attorney's Office to come forward. Okay. Uh, we're gonna be... We're joined by Mr. Wezar, so the entire committee is here. Uh, we're gonna do the very best that we can, like we always have, to take all of the public comment, but, uh, there's a funeral for one of our colleagues, and, uh, so I need you to quick, to the point, because that, uh, we cannot miss that. So we're gonna do items one, two, and three. I'm gonna ask for reports. Uh, then I'll try to slip in public comment from time to time. Do we wanna start out with you, Ms. Packard, or what works best?
Are we... Thank you, Council President. Are we gonna discuss the rules and regulations first?
We're gonna do all three.
Okay.
So how do you wanna...
If we're gonna start with the rules and regulations, I would ask the City Attorney to start us off.
Okay, let us do that. Is that you, Dave?
It is. David Michelson with the Office of City Attorney. Pleased to be here this morning. With me, behind me, are a number of lawyers from our office who've been very involved in assisting in this endeavor. Our office transmitted on Friday, um, actually Thursday, excuse me, two ordinances. One is the ordinance that provides the legal statutory regulatory framework for commercial cannabis activity here in the city. The second ordinance our office transmitted was an uncodified ordinance that provides the rules and regulations to assist in implementing the licensing ordinance. Also, before you today, I believe, is the, what we sometimes refer to as the planning ordinance, that provides the various restrictions from sort of a distance and sensitive use perspective. All the ordinances that we have transmitted are pursuant to and to the best of our ability consistent with the council's instructions. We work closely with, of course, the new Department of Cannabis Regulations and a number of other offices and departments. We're certainly prepared to answer any questions you may have. Um, and we anticipate, of course, maybe some further changes to those ordinances pursuant to council request.
I just wanted to add a note that last Thursday, the state released its emergency rulemaking and regulations, and so there will need to be some technical changes to our both procedural ordinance and our rules and regulations ordinance to make sure that we are consistent with what the state is moving forward with.
Any significant changes, or are we gonna go through that today, or is that for later conversation?
Uh, some of those things we can absolutely go forward with today. There were a number of new license types that were created at the state level, namely, we had been making a distinction between storefront retailers and non-storefront retailers in respect to delivery. What the state has moved forward with is a Type IX non-storefront retailer, so this is going to be a, essentially, a delivery business that is not open to the public at all for storefront traffic. This is now a Type IX license. There are also a Type I C specialty indoor cottage cultivation license, which has, which was missing from our ordinance, which we should absolutely move forward and add. The state has added a processor license as a cultivation subset of a license. These are folks who would be doing trimming, those types of things, to cannabis plants. And then lastly, in terms of manufacturing, there are two more license types that have been added, and that is for type N infusion, folks who are infusing cannabis products but are not participating in extractions themselves. And then a Type P license for individuals who would just be packaging and labeling products but will not be actually participating in the manufacturing of those products.
Okay. And then you'll be making recommendations as to adjustments we might need to make and...
Absolutely.
Okay, members, what I think we wanna start off with is because, uh, something that we talked about the last hearing, and then something that we briefly chatted about in council was the social equity program. So I think we are prepared to go through the recommendations, so I'm gonna ask Ms. Packard to begin.
So for quite some time now, as we have been having this conversation about how to responsibly move forward with a regulatory framework that is inclusive of all Angelenos, one of the things that we have centered our conversation around is a concept of social equity. Uh, and there have been lots of conversations about reasons why social equity programs might be needed, but it comes down to the fact that if we are, as a city, going to lead on this issue, we have to take into account the experiences that this city has had with cannabis and with past cannabis policies. We have to move forward, understanding the impact that past cannabis policies have had on the City of Los Angeles and Angelenos here. To that end, we know, we have now had a report that was conducted by CLA and folks who have contracted out, AMAC, Foster, and Wheeler. Those consultants are here right now, today. They had put together an addendum for folks that outlined some of the concerns that were raised during the last Rules Committee meeting. But generally, we know that past cannabis policies have been extremely impactful, and there's no reason to believe that future cannabis policies aren't going to be impactful as well. So we have to make sure that we responsibly regulate this commercial cannabis activity. But before we do so, it is extremely important that we acknowledge the experiences that community members have had with cannabis and past cannabis policies. To that end, individuals who are generally low income and minority have experienced disproportionate impacts via their experiences with cannabis, and it's not because they consume cannabis any more than their counterparts, but largely because of the way that we have allowed law enforcement to target these community members. And here in the City of Los Angeles, although African-Americans are only 10% of the population, they were seven times more likely to be arrested. And unfortunately, because we don't collect census data for Latino populations, we don't even have accurate numbers, so to speak, on what those disproportionate impacts have meant for those community members moving forward. The intention behind this social equity program is to ensure that community members who have been most impacted by law enforcement have an opportunity to participate in the economic opportunities that are ahead. And this is extremely important, because those past cannabis experiences and run-ins with law enforcement would have been the very reasons why they were denied economic opportunities before. Having a past cannabis arrest or criminal record could mean that you were denied for housing, education, employment, and now we are just weeks away from starting a framework where participating in this industry commercially is going to be worth quite a bit of money, and so we wanna make sure that those community members have access to these jobs, to ownership opportunities, and to community reinvestment moving forward. And so that is what is in front of us today as we move this conversation forward. I will very quickly articulate what is in the proposed social equity program. First and foremost, the goals of the program is to acknowledge and address the harms of individuals and community members who have experienced disproportionate enforcement of past cannabis laws, and to create sustainable economic opportunity for and among social equity program participants. The way that this program will work in practice is threefold. First and foremost, there will be opportunities for social equity workers, so businesses who are participating in this framework will be required to have social equity hires. In addition to the 10% transitional hire, there will be a 20% social equity hire and a 50% local hire, as this conversation moves forward, for businesses who are participating in the social equity program. That covers what the city is intending to do in terms of job opportunities. For ownership opportunities, a number of different things are gonna happen. First and foremost, this conversation has to fit into the larger framework of how we move forward with our licensing scheme. So we know that Prop D businesses are going to get priority, Prop M businesses are gonna get priority in the processing of their applications. As we fold this social equity program into the larger regulatory framework, we have now allowed for a second window of individuals to get processed, and this is going to be for folks who are participating in non-retail activity. Essentially, folks who are already in operation and are participating in non-retail activity will have the opportunity to join the social equity program. These individuals and businesses will have to go through inspections and get various sign-offs from different departments, but they will be able to move forward second. Lastly, after we had the Prop M priority businesses move forward and the non-retail businesses move forward, we would move forward with a one-to-one ratio for non-retail businesses. Because we have around about 150 Prop D businesses who are going to be able to move forward in this retail space, we should also consider making sure that there is parity and consistency with how we move forward in a retail context for social equity applicants, particularly because we're now moving forward with this public convenience or necessity conversation, which will put a soft cap on the number of businesses that will be allowed to participate here in the City of Los Angeles. In that context, for retail operations, the city should see around 400 retail businesses. Because we already have about 150 of these retail businesses that will immediately be able to move forward because of their Prop M priority processing, it is my recommendation to this Rules Committee that we wait and make sure that we have an equal number of social equity applicants in this retail space before we open up retail to any other applicant. So that would be a large component of the program, as well as making sure that there's parity and consistency among retail operators. And then lastly, what this program is also intending to do is to create a community reinvestment model that will allow businesses to sign up for community benefit agreements and developmental agreements that will allow community members, not only social equity community members, but as a whole, as we're having this conversation about how we need to move forward with responsible regulation, there are four things that I think are absolutely critical, and we can essentially add the word equity behind each and every single one of these words. The first thing that the City Council should move forward and consider is health equity. We absolutely have to have health equity as we move this conversation forward. Secondly, we need to make sure that we have education equity as we move this conversation forward. Regulation equity, and then enforcement equity. So essentially, the acronym is HEARE, Health, Education, Regulation, and Enforcement. If we can broaden this framework of equity to include all of these things, I think that we are moving forward responsibly, we are moving forward equitably, and we will lead the nation in responsible and equitable cannabis policies.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to planning. Maybe you can quickly walk through your report.
Certainly. Good morning. Phyllis Nathanson with the Planning Department. Department of Planning has prepared an ordinance restricting the location of cannabis-related businesses, and as you are well aware, there are other ordinances that address the application, licensing process, operations, and enforcement. The Planning Department proposed location restriction ordinance would be, these regulations would be in the business regulations of the municipal code, not in the zoning code, and they would not supersede any existing regulations. They would not supersede the building code, the zoning code, or specific plans. In the ordinance, the restrictions align with the state license types: retail, microbusiness, cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing. And outdoor cultivation, other than for personal use, would not be allowed. And the licenses would be, the license types would be generally allowed where the zoning code allows the underlying business activity. For example, retail licenses would be allowed where retail uses are allowed, testing licenses would be allowed where testing labs are allowed, and so forth. Regarding specific plans, specific plans, there are two types of specific plans. One type uses conventional zoning like C2, M1, et cetera, and those specific plans are not called out in the ordinance. They're not called out separately because of the way the provisions are written. They are, would be covered under the general zoning categories. However, specific plans with their own unique zoning nomenclature, like the UCCA in the cornfield arroyo specific plan, are called out because these zones wouldn't be, wouldn't otherwise be covered. The ordinance also creates, requires a buffer distance between retail uses, retail licenses such as retail and microbusinesses with onsite sales. Those are required to be at least 800 feet from each other and from sensitive sites. And the sensitive site categories in the ordinance are schools, whether private or public, K through 12, alcoholism, drug abuse recovery treatment facilities, public libraries, and public parks. And then just wrapping up, so the ordinance also includes grandfathering provisions, allowing existing medical marijuana dispensaries, which are in compliance with Prop D and up to date on taxes, may continue in their current location if they apply for a city license within 60 days of those becoming available, and they don't expand their physical size. The ordinance before you was recommended by the City Planning Commission at its September meeting, and the Planning Commission also expressed the desire for the City Council to consider several additional items that were forwarded in a letter accompanying the Planning Commission's action on the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from anyone else? Any questions? Mr. Wezar?
Yeah, just have a very broad question, in that the new cannabis department will be dealing with a number of land use and planning issues, and the Planning Department has the expertise, the history with these types of issues. Do we anticipate the cannabis department pretty much on its own deciding on these issues, or will there be some type of communication? I'm just trying to get a sense of how we're gonna move forward as we create this new department. Will the new department rely heavily on the Planning Department and/or is the cannabis department anticipating being on its own and analyzing all these additional land use issues?
The cannabis department will be an independent department, but the Planning Department will be available for any support needed for GIS services or whatever other services are needed. We could be helpful.
And that's the case with other departments currently, correct? I mean, there are other departments that sometimes need support with GIS or other land use issues, and they call upon you just for additional assistance. Does the Planning Department anticipate any additional costs with this that will need to be filled in next year's budget?
I am not aware of any. We have someone from the Planning Department who might be able to speak to that, Jason Kalin.
Good morning, Jason Kalin, Department of City Planning. We're not asking for any additional resources at this time. As part of the buildup for the application and licensing system, we are gonna build an interface between the DCR system and our ArcGIS system to allow for Department of, for DCR staff to look at the underlying zoning, and if there are red flags or issues with the underlying zoning or any other planning-related issue, we will have a dedicated liaison to DCR to provide assistance.
Okay. So just to kinda lay out where I think, what I believe we'll attempt to do today is this committee will suggest some amendments. We will then, by the end of next week, have this item in council for a conversation. It will not be a voting item, issue, next week, but we wanna afford every member of the council an opportunity to go through all of the good work that you guys have done. So I wanna prepare you for questions and answers and possible amendments or what have you, but I wanna put you on alert that it is our plan to have a council hearing so that we can vet this. Then the next time we bring it back to council, hopefully that would be for a vote. So I'm gonna start off with some of the public comment right now. I wanna call, um, and like I said, we're taking up items one, two, and three right now, so your public comment should deal with those items. Mike O'Gara, Stephen LaBelle, Umberto Quintana, and Mr. Cincineros Moises.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Just for the record, I have a card here from Clifton Albright with no number, so I don't know if he wants to speak on...
I'm sure it's on items one, two, or three. Okay. Okay, so, uh, don't go anywhere, guys. Stay, don't go too far. All right, yes, sir.
As requested, I'll be brief. I have a four-page item that I sent to you. I'm with Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council, speaking for them. We're requesting a Neighborhood Council Community Benefits Fund to be administered by the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. That's page four on your prayer sheet there. We absolutely want no barbed wire or razor wire of any kind on any fences in our neighborhood. We don't want these places living, you know, they're like concentration camps. We have to live in that neighborhood. This is quality of life issues. It may not be against planning, but it is a quality of life issue. Hours of operation, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Regulation of edibles, the Department, County Department of Board and Health has to be involved in the regulations regarding that. We need much more police enforcement. Originally, there was an item saying that we were gonna have 65 police officers to regulate things from Porter Ranch down to San Pedro, no consumption of cannabis on any licensed area, and then I have several items there on advertising and where not to allow advertising.
Thank you.
When I was a kid, they advertised cigarette smoking on the subways and the buses and everything in New York on radio, et cetera, and they made it glamorous, all the movie star. This is not glamorous. We're gonna lose a whole generation of kids with this.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes, identify. Stephen LaBelle.
Yes.
Thank you. First, thank you all for what is a lot of hard work that I know has been going into this in a very short period of time. I'd just like to address on the second ordinance, the implementing ordinance, I heard some of the discussion this morning. As we know, the state changed some of their implementing requirements, and I'd ask that the city also go through their rules and procedures to mirror the state. The biggest one is the rollout date of, the state's gonna allow July 1, 2018 with respect to testing, as long as there's some consumer protections on, and labeling on all the packaging. I'd ask that the city also consider that date instead of the April date as proposed. There is significant changes in inventory control, the amount of product that has to be out on the shelves in storage and removal at night. There are minor security requirements such as pixels in the cameras, frames per second, retention, time. There's numerous little things that I'd ask that, and I heard a little bit this morning that you all review that as you go through this for your next amendment. Thank you for your time and your work.
Thank you for coming. Hey, man, good to see you again.
Hello, good morning. Moises Neros, Executive Director of the Alilatino Chamber of Commerce. We urge the committee and staff to close any loopholes that allow for non-social equity members to be labeled as such. Specifically, we ask that you strike language in the policy that defines a social equity member enterprise as one being where they have a board consisting of 51% or more social equity members. We would like the board to be replaced with ownership. Board doesn't really have the gravitas that we are looking for. We really need the 51% social equity members to be owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, members of this committee. Umberto Quintana with the Office of Councilman Monica Rodriguez. On October 13, 2017, the Councilman submitted a letter that requests that A1, A2 agricultural zones be removed from the eligible zones list for mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation. Mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation conducted in a greenhouse does not offer the same protections found in a fully enclosed brick-and-mortar structure. Mixed light commercial cannabis cultivation is a commercial use, and due to its, the crop's lucrative nature, elicits illegal activity. The agricultural zones located in the 7th Council District are nestled between single-family residential and equestrian uses. Given the proximity to these sensitive uses, there are no conditions that can be applied to adequately mitigate the negative spillover effects of... to adequately mitigate the negative spillover effects associated with commercial cannabis activity. This intense commercial activity would be taking place adjacent to low intensity residential uses. Once again, the Office of Councilman Monica Rodriguez supports the removal of A1, A2 agricultural zones from the eligible zoned list. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. Okay, so now if I can get Sarah come up, Sarah Armstrong, Rafael Bernardino Jr., is it Assad Baj, or Baji? Please, just come on. Sarah.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
You have letters before you on the issues of caps and also delivery services. Of the two, the one closest to my heart is delivery services. We'd like very much for them to be included in provisional priority licensing so that patients may continue to enjoy receiving their medicine in their home. We have many, many patients who cannot leave their home. If you leave this exclusively in the hands of the Prop D priority people, we're fine with that, except that because of other restrictions in the proposed ordinances, they won't be able to alter their premises to begin operating these or these types of businesses quickly. Whereas if you include the delivery services that want to come forward for priority licensing, they are set up, their physical plant is set up for it, and they can go very quickly into delivery. That means no let up, no failure of the supply chain for patients. I hope that you will consider this. It is so very important for the sickest among us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Come on up, my friend.
Good morning, President Weston. My name is Rafael Bernardino. I'm an attorney in Los Angeles, and formerly I was on the Board of Police Commissioners where I worked with Commander Giamalla and for Mr. T. Van Kuzier. Generally, I represent women and minority owners who are interested in getting into the commercial cannabis business, and we don't have any problem with these regulations or the proposed changes because we know what they are. The problem, President Weston, is with the undue concentration. Right now, based on the rules and regulations, the city's developed certain maps which show what locations are good, what locations are not good. This undue concentration is something that would happen after our clients have entered into leases, after our clients have, in some cases, spent a lot of money to bring a building up to code. And therefore, we think it's unfair that after they have done this, the city would then determine that you are not qualified because of an undue concentration. They need to know in advance if they're going to be knocked out later because of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Uslabeg with Advancement Projects, speaking on the community reinvestment portion of this item. We commend the City Council for agendizing this issue, but we do want to recommend a language that includes funding for proactive youth development services in Los Angeles. This is important because the city is home to eight hundred thousand young people in ages of ten to twenty-four. Over two hundred thousand are living in poverty, three thousand are homeless, and according to the L.A. U.S. there's a twelve percent dropout rate. The city's current youth development approach is a piecemeal process where no current department is responsible for strategies or outcomes. The pattern of investment by the city is consequential since there is no, there is no tracking or measurement to figure out which youth actually need investment and which you don't. This area is important since this investment is key for the future of Los Angeles. Lastly, the city is expected to receive fifty million dollars worth of revenue beginning in twenty eighteen, and we commend the efforts to figure out a social equity program, but do recommend language to include funding specifically carved out for youth education services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If I can get Dana Cisneros and Virgil Grant and Mario Fedeline and Donnie Anderson. Yes.
Good morning, I'm Dana Cisneros. I'm the lead attorney with the cannabis corporate law firm, and I represent industry and stakeholders within the cannabis industry. And my comments are with regard to the delivery services, I would echo what this lovely woman, Sarah, said earlier regarding delivery services. And if we look at the caps that have been imposed by these ordinances, there are really only two hundred and sixty-five-ish licenses left to go around, and I think that by including delivery services with that, you're incentivizing delivery services to go outside of the city of Los Angeles and still continue to deliver to Los Angeles residents. I think that's a missed revenue opportunity for the city of L.A. I would suggest that you guys take a look at the type nine licensing so that you can see whether or not you can work that into your framework and see if there's some additional licenses that you can open up for those delivery services. And then just as an aside, under the new regulations that were just issued by the state, I know another gentleman was urging you guys to look at those and reconcile them. Fifty-twenty-six does include a six hundred foot buffer for daycare centers and youth centers, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Council. Just want to speak towards social equity and how important it is. Good morning, my name is Virgil Grant. I spent six years in federal prison for the war on drugs for owning a pre-Ico dispensary. This just didn't happen to me, but members of my community as well as the industry. What L.A. is doing regarding social equity will be followed around the country. Social equity won't even begin to touch the surface of the harm or the damage that has been done, but it's a darn good start. CMA, which is an organization that I co-founded, we are giving educational and training programs as well as partnering social equity applicants with private financial institutions, and CMA has a mentoring program to mentor these businesses to achieve a high level of success. Thank you for your great work.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mario?
Yes, good morning. My name is Mario Fedlin. I'm the Executive Director of a local nonprofit. I am a member, I live in District fourteen, and I've been working with Council District fourteen on the reinvestment of cannabis into youth development. Right now is the time, we know that fifty million dollars of revenue is going to come into the city. We have a piecemeal approach when thinking about, right now, the fifty-three million dollars the city is spending on gang reduction, workforce, and we really need to start thinking about all young people. So when thinking about those positive young people doing really great things in the community, and how do we lift them up and give them the investment they need and the strategy to lift them out of poverty? So I encourage you to push some cannabis funds into actually helping us create a strategy for our young people in Los Angeles. Thank you so much for the support.
Thank you. Morning. Good morning. Good morning, Council President, Council members. Thank you for the long hours and times to get this right. My name is Donnie Anderson. I'm the Chair of the California Minority Alliance. It's easy for those to question about social equity when they have never been through what our communities of color has been going through for decades and still going through. You are denied government assistance, you can't receive public housing or financial aid to pursue a higher education because of a felony, or you can't receive a decent wage-paying job because of a felony when it shouldn't have been an infraction in the first place. They don't have a clue, nor will they until they walked in our shoes. Alice Huffman of the NAACP, Lynn Lyman of Drug Policy, and myself have worked tireless hours to make sure that funds from Adult Sixty-Four make it back to the communities that was harmed by the failed war on drugs. African Americans and Latinos, it's easy for those to question why should felonies have an opportunity, because seventy percent of them shouldn't have had a felony in the first place. California is the sixth largest economy in the world, but have the largest prison population in the world. Pop sixty-four in Los Angeles Social Equity Program, making the whole country acknowledge the travesty that is a cause to CMA to fight and ensure that communities of color have been negatively impacted and give a fair equitable opportunity to participate in the California adored marijuana business. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Don Rayvon, Will Robinson, Miguel Dominguez, Tomar. Amen.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you, Council, for having us. I just left Las Vegas for the National Cannabis Convention, and I want to let the Council know that the world is watching what Los Angeles will do. To that end, I'd like to suggest to the city that we create some sort of financial subcommittee. I am concerned that as the policy, the social equity program is being framed, we're not really sure how to bring money onboard. As an investor in the city, I've done well by investing in technology deals, but those are pretty set. As I try to go aggregate capital for the social equity participants, it's not a clear conversation how to have with family offices, other investors. I see the work that Virgil and Donnie are doing. I'm trying to join forces and really create pockets of capital that is sensitive to the social equity need, but that's hard to do when there's not a clear message. So I'd like to suggest to the city that we create some sort of committee and some sort of accountability that can come back to you guys and say, these policies are creating these impacts, and capital that's going to be needed in weeks. It's not clear how we're going to onboard that money.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Good morning, my name is Will English Robinson. I'm from Compton, California. Before my family and I became victims of this senseless war on drugs, I was married for sixteen years, had four beautiful children, I was thirty-nine years old with a zero criminal history. I held a real estate license and a life insurance license. I'm an entrepreneur, operated a crating, packaging, and shipping company. In two thousand and five, I was indicted for conspiracy to transport marijuana. With the first time nonviolent record, I was sentenced to eighteen years and seven months. My family was devastated and torn apart. I missed my children's graduations, proms, and many other memorable life events. My mother and grandmother, who had never missed a visiting day, passed away within twelve months of each other. I've just been released two months ago. Upon my release, I reached out to Mr. Virgil Grant of CMA, and I'm involved in their mentoring program, which I'm hoping will help restore my life back to normal utilizing the social equity program. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. My name is Tomar Graziani. I put in a note for two items, so I would appreciate a little bit more.
No, you don't, just, you know the drill.
Okay. Well, I'd like to first address the license caps that you guys recently introduced. I think after almost two years of working and talking to the committee and showing you guys why caps don't work, and you guys hearing why caps don't work, it's a little surprising to see us trying to do that again. And if there is going to be a cap, I'd like to echo the words of Sarah to make sure that that is separate from delivery-only licenses. As Kat mentioned, there are some changes in the recent regulations from the state, notably their insurrection that manufacturing would be able to share multiple locations. I urge the city to address that. And in terms of social equity, I asked you, Mr. Weston, a few weeks ago, if the city did some research or looked into how much money it's going to start, it's going to cost starting each one of these businesses. I'm all for social equity, but if people that would like to be a part of that, or also small manufacturers that are part of the city, want to get into the industry, you need to give them the opportunity to do so with licenses and with things that would require less upfront money, not putting in thirty to fifty thousand dollars just to be able to get a space to possibly start your business there. It's not going to be accessible to most of the equity people, it's not going to be accessible to white people that are trying to raise money to do that.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker. And then after that, Ruby Rivera, Tatiana Brenner, Nancy Woodruff, and Cliff Albright. Yes.
Hello, good morning, Council members. My name is Miguel Dominguez. I'm here with Community Coalition and Coalition with other groups as well, like the Brother Son Self Coalition. I'm here to support the motion to add language within draft ordinance to establish youth development and education as priorities in your community reinvestment fund investments. I'm a lifelong resident of South LA, so I've seen the impacts that the war on drug policies have had, not only within my family but within the communities. It's had impacts such as like breaking up families because of incarceration and just everything that comes with that, including unemployment. And those are, those have had long-lasting impacts in the community of South LA, where we have engaged thousands of residents, and they continue to see marijuana policies as something that they're worried about. And so I'm here to really ask that we do something for the most vulnerable communities, which are the black and brown youth, and we really prioritize them through this youth development and education. And so I think you have an opportunity to like really reverse a lot of like the negative impacts and the historical impacts that we've had on these communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. So, yeah. Just identify yourself.
Hello, everyone, I'm Ruby Rivera. I'm part of the Invest in Youth Coalition. We've been working with Councilmember Weezer to help the city invest in youth in a more sustained coordinated way. L.A. is home to eight hundred thousand youth ages ten to twenty-four, sixty-six thousand of which are not working or enrolled in school. And research demonstrates investment in quality youth programs plays a central role in preparing young people for the workforce and/or higher education. This makes it that much more important to invest in positive youth development. The city's current youth development effort lacks a centralized accountability. There is a need for a department responsible for identifying strategies that increase outcomes. It is, it is an especially good time for the city to make these investments, as Los Angeles stands to collect fifty million dollars from cannabis sales in twenty eighteen and an estimated two hundred and fifty million over the next five years. So we're asking for the establishment of a youth development department in the city of Los Angeles prioritizing positive youth development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy Woodruff. I'm with Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. Number one, we highly endorse the no cultivation in A zones as proposed by Councilwoman Rodriguez and Councilman Precorian. We ask, where's the need for additional cultivation? Numerous indoor cultivations will be operating within the city in the M zones, and California, apparently by the reports, has had an excess of product for quite a while, so we don't see where the need is. The A zones in the northeast valley are in low and ultra-low density residential neighborhoods with the last active area for horsekeeping, small ranches, not farming. We also recommend that community benefits be directed to neighborhood councils to determine their community needs and uses to be administered by Dunn. Thank you.
Thank you. And you should just know on the item suggested by Miss Rodriguez and Mr. Precorian in our setup amendments, I think the First Amendment addresses that concern, so I, I think that, just to let you guys know that. All right, so if I could have the next, please come and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Tatiana Brenner, Council on behalf of the U.CBA. I'd like to thank the city for all its hard work, and I'd also like to request that a change in organizational structure from a nonprofit to a for-profit not be considered a change that needs to be reported to the city under the change of ownership provisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I need Mr. Albright, Tyrone Freeman, Michael Jensen, and I believe this is Lucy Herrera. Yes, Mr. Albright.
Good morning. We are committed, my firm is committed, and I have my cannabis unit here today with us. The three ladies back there, and they were in Las Vegas last week at the convention. We're committed to making sure the social equity program works exactly like the council wants it to work and intends, and we suggest that a fifty percent ownership would be the most effective ownership for the social equity program because the thirty-three and a third percent would make those social equity members mere investors and would have no authority to do anything, and the entire profit could go to expenses and other related things that they would have no authority to talk about. And the fifty-one percent would, no reasonable businessperson would turn over fifty-one percent of his business if he's putting up all the capital and would have to depend on someone that may not have the experience to tell him how to run his business. So the fifty percent would cause both sides to really look to each other for real partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Make a note of that, Ms. Packard. I like, yes, Mr. Freeman.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Tyrone Freeman, Executive Director for the California Minority Alliance. Thank you for an opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Packard, and the departments for a great job done and a great job in progress. Let me say and putting in a framework or the context of the Let me say and putting in the framework of the context of my comments. First of all, we are addressing a systemic problem of cannabis in the industry. It exists. People use it. There are legal operations. And in that context, this committee has done a great job. But let me say this, that the context of social equity program is not a door window for everyone. It is a response to a systemic problem of those who have been disadvantaged and disproportionately targeted due to the war on drugs. And I think it's important to mention that it is important to have training element. It is important for economic parity across the board in this industry and that there needs to be equity in ownership. There needs to be opportunity for those who need a second chance, as you've heard. And I want to comment on a particular aspect of this. It is important to understand that the social equity program is the only systemic response to the cannabis industry. There are three pages to the amendment that address training, community development, how a structure should be, your relationship to the community. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, the social equity program is the framework upon which cannabis should be modeled across the country because it addresses issues of our community, it addresses issues of ownership, it addresses issues of equality. Let us not forget, and this is a great framework to build the program, and I commend you on your work to this day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, council. My name is Lucy Herrera. I'm a resident of Boyle Heights, and I'm here with the Invest in Youth Coalition. And I wanted to speak on how a portion of the cannabis revenue should be used for a coordinated youth development department. Los Angeles is home to over 800,000 youth ages 10 to 24, and research has shown investment in youth programs play a central role in preparing them for the workforce and higher education. 66,000 of our young people are not working, enrolled in school and not given the tools to help them reach their full potential. Positive youth development outside of schools is where the city has to take the lead role. Los Angeles spends $65 per youth while other large cities such as San Francisco and New York spend $1,871 and $541 per youth. I believe we can use the cannabis revenue to finally coordinate and organize youth development efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. And before the next, are you Mr. Jensen?
I am.
Okay, so after him, I'm looking for Gina Cruz, Fannie Guzman, Rafael Gonzalez. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Michael Jensen. I'm here from Turner's Law Group. I want to talk about three things. The first one is undue concentration. I think what, what this achieves is the opposite of what is intended. Because of the way that the map of LA is zoned, low residential areas or low population areas have the lowest caps, and that's really where we should be putting these businesses. And I think that, that's what many council members would agree is the goal versus in the high population areas where the caps are high, but there may not be available manufacturing zones. The second thing is with respect to the limited immunity provision for, or the requirement that the applicants be social equity eligible, I'm just curious as to who might qualify for low income, who has been operating for two years and also part of a Prop D collective. And I think what's probably going to result is instead, highly capitalized businesses will be the only ones who can actually meet this criteria, and that's going to destroy the mom and pop industry that we know exists here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Gina Cruz. I am a owner of an equestrian property in Lakeview Terrace. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Rodriguez for her request that the A1 and A2 zones be removed from cultivation. I believe there's a fundamental misunderstanding about the A1 and A2 zones, as was already mentioned. These are not commercial farms at this point. Most of these properties are actually ranches, and they're surrounded by residential equestrian zoned properties. So as you consider cultivation on these properties, I'd like you to understand what's currently being cultivated on these properties. And a little hint, it's not corn and tomatoes. Here's what we actually cultivate. Perseverance in children who are learning to ride, and they learn to get back up on that horse when they fall off. We're cultivating stress reduction in middle-class adults who work hard all week, and all they want to do is go ride their horses and get a little relaxation on the weekends. And confidence in soldiers who come back from war and engage in therapeutic riding. The horses have nowhere else to go but cannabis cultivation does. Thank you.
No, thank you. Next speaker, please. Identify yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Fannie Guzman, and I am representing Latinos for Cannabis. I'd like to talk about the census inadequate, census data inadequate for our Latino community population count. As you know, the census historically has been an undercount of Latino communities because it does not capture the undocumented. Is it legally permissible to have, to use alternative accepted methods for population counts like those used by researchers instead of the census data since this will impact the number of licenses available in the Latino communities? I also wanted a request from the city of LA that the final reports for the cannabis-related ordinances be fact-checked and all unsustained allegations be stricken. Thank you for your time. And that's it.
No, thank you for coming down.
I appreciate it.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Deena Cruz, and I'm with Community Center Emergency Room Project, and I worked in Boyle Heights. And I'd like to address the importance of setting a cap on the number of licenses that are allowed. That is so important, especially for poor communities of color, because for some reason there is tremendous interest in those communities for the land to, to have those businesses there. So we need to set a cap on the density, and it is so important that the community reinvestment goes to education and prevention because we need those in the community. And density is a big problem and it needs to be addressed because there's a tremendous interest to have those businesses all over. So we need to, we need to control that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, esteemed members of the Rules Committee. My name is Rafael Gonzalez, and I'm with First Five LA. I'm here representing our organization in support of the Cannabis Social Equity Analysis Report recommendation to create a community reinvestment fund that focuses on youth prevention and education and target communities most impacted by prior cannabis policy and enforcement. As the council considers this motion to develop an ordinance with these recommendations, we ask that the Rules Committee consider inclusion of this language that lifts youth investments within the community reinvestment fund. In particular, that the fund establish that youth development and education are given top priority when considering investment into communities most impacted by prior cannabis policy and enforcement. And to ensure that any funds spent on youth development and education target children and youth from age zero to 18. By including social equity programs and the community reinvestment fund, we ensure that we can rebuild the lives of thousands of children, strengthen the families of former inmates, bolder the employment capacity of the families and revitalize our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can, it's Seamus Garrity representing Assembly District 43, Elmer, is it Rodan, Elmer, and Araceli Gonzalez? Yes, sir. Please.
Hi, Mr. President. Sheamus Garrity from Assembly Member Laura Friedman's office. Looking at the map, we noticed that there is a particularly large density of the newly zoned areas in the 43rd Assembly District, particularly in Atwater Village. And we're just hoping that the business community and the local community leaders were consulted and will be consulted in the future regarding the density. Also, that there is some communication with the surrounding cities of Glendale and Burbank because so many of the newly zoned areas come up against the borders of Glendale and Burbank. Thanks.
Thank you for coming down. Yes.
Good morning. Araceli Sandoval Gonzalez, representing a coalition, an early education coalition for the California Community Foundation. I am actually here to speak in that a definition be created to include zero through 18 youth programs for youth and education or in the cannabis regulation. We are a coalition of over 54 organizations. We strongly support early education because we know that there's broad research that says investing in zero to five is really critical, particularly when it comes to the brain development that happens in our young children. We also know that over 25% of children from five and under are, whose parents are incarcerated, and they also witness these incarcerations happen, which creates a lot of toxic stress. So we are here to ask that a definition be established, again, that is inclusive of zero to 18, not forgetting our youngest children between zero to five. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Elmer Rodan. I'm the manager of the Brother Son Self Coalition. We are a partnership of 10 organizations working to decriminalize youth throughout LA County. Today, I'm representing one of our member organizations, Inner City Struggle. We are here in support of the social equity proposal, specifically the community reinvestment fund, including specific language to be directed at youth development and education for children zero or 18 years of age. We believe that it's just, that it's timely, and that it's critical for communities of color throughout Los Angeles to receive this support, communities that have been disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to try to take a few more names on these three items. I want Walter Edwards, I think it's Gabriel Guzman, Marcy Lyles. Please come forward. Please. Whoever gets there first, just.
Good morning, council.
Mr. Herman, please be quiet. You're disrupting my meeting.
Good morning, council. My name is Walter Lance Edwards. I've been in the city for 55 years. I've seen the effect on the war on drugs. I used to live in the William E. Projects right down the street here. As a little boy, before I was 10 years old, I did various jobs there. Shine shoes, made my own box at the union station. I sold newspapers here. This was my route. And Little Joe's in Chinatown. I worked on milk trucks in my community in the project. I came out of there, I moved to South Central. My world changed. It stopped. You know, this affected me. I stand here right now for those who can't stand here, those who are in the grave, my friends, man and female, those who are downtown, Skid Row, left behind, just lost their mind. You know, I stand here right now telling you that this social equity program does work and it will work. It will allow us to reinvest in our community. I've got five daughters that I've been taking care of, that I love. I don't want them to be affected by me, and they was affected by me. Not being a parent, I could be. I've been in prison before. We stand here today that we can make a difference and a big change. I need more time to tell you how I can really feel about how this social equity program will help us. And thank you for your hard work. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Yes, sir.
Hello, good morning. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Gabriel Guzman. I'm here on behalf of Latinos for Cannabis, and I'd like to start off with an open letter that was written here to honorable Mike Fewer, our former council member, Nick Pacheco, that discusses the inaccurate reports that threaten the social equity program. Government reports tend to have a greater influence on the public than those from the private sector, and thus there is a greater responsibility that they be accurate. The plan of report dated September 14, 2017, contains conclusory allegations of cannabis retail dispensaries being associated with criminal activity, yet there are no facts within the report supporting such conclusions. These reports must be accurate because the public will be hostile towards individuals with criminal histories being invited to engage in an history that is described as associated with criminal activity. Obviously, if the allegations has a factual basis, then it will be just be another challenge that we will overcome, but if it does not, then it must be stricken from the report. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, yes.
Hi, good morning. My name is Marcy Lyles, speaking on the social equity program. I was born and raised in Los Angeles, and I want to start off by truly thanking the city council and Ms. Packard, thinking about the forgotten and hopeless communities from which I'm a part of, and that I have been negatively impacted by the failed war on black and brown people. I have been personally affected by the men that have been taken out of the home through mass incarceration. This has been a contributing factor to the issues of children not listening to single parents. These mothers have had to work two and three jobs to provide for their families to compensate for the lack of income from the father who was not there. I have had to work long hours to raise my three boys alone. I am blessed that my oldest son is in college, but is also struggling financially and emotionally without the support from his absent father. The social equity program would totally bring help, hope and opportunity back into our communities for minority women. I would like to work towards ownership, branding, franchising through creating business, training and job security that will secure future success and wealth for many generations and end the cycle of poverty that was so many of us have faced on a daily basis. Two mottos I live by, better now than later, and success is about how many lives you can improve. If you're solving problems, you're doing good in the world. So if you're doing good and solving problems, you can make money and also be successful. God bless you and Godspeed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, again, I appreciate everybody that came, but on, Mr. Clerk, on items one through three, I'm closing the public comment, and we're going to address the issues right now. Members, do you want me to bring up any other, any more panelists? Do you have any questions? Well, we're going to, can, let's say, let's, Ms. Packard, let's walk through some of the, I think we should walk through the amendments. Do we need to have some other staff up to help you as we go through the proposed amendments? And just quickly go through them.
All right, are we going to start with the rules and regulatory ordinance?
Well, you know what? Why don't we go through the amendments where it relates to the recommendations that I've made?
Okay.
The recommendations that deal specifically with the social equity.
So the recommendation that we have before was, would be for the city attorney to coordinate with the Department of Cannabis Regulation, the chief legislative analyst, and the chair of the Rules Committee to create an equity program that would adopt the social equity analysis that was put together by Amick Foster and Wheeler. It would establish the goals for the social equity program as such to acknowledge and address the harms of individuals and communities who had experienced disproportionate enforcement of past cannabis laws and to create sustainable economic opportunity among social equity participants. There'd be a number of criteria that were established for social equity participants, namely, four tiers. The first tier would be among individuals who were low income, had a prior California cannabis conviction, or lived in a disproportionately impacted area for a cumulative time of five years. These individuals would have to have 51% ownership approved by the social equity program participant. And again, these folks would have to have a 50% local hire, inclusive of 20% social equity workers and 10% transitional workers. There'd be a second tier that would be created for the program in which individuals would be low income or have lived in a disproportionately impacted area for five years with the same ownership and hiring requirements. For the tier three of the social equity program, these individuals would either be low income and have lived in a disproportionately impacted community for five years, or have lived in a disproportionately impacted community for 10 years. As this language is currently set up, the ownership requirement would be for 33 and 1/3% and still have the same hiring requirements as tiers one and two. The fourth tier of the program would be for a social equity program partner. Now, these individuals would not necessarily be considered social equity participants themselves. They would be businesses that were supporting social equity. And they would do so by either providing capital, lease-based, business licensing and compliance assistance to tier one and tier two applicants, and also they would be responsible for contributing a percentage of their gross receipts to a community reinvestment program, which many folks talked about today. In addition to establishing the criteria for these various tiers, there'd be a number of benefits that program participants would have access to, namely, business licensing and compliance assistance, priority processing, priority renewals, the ability to have site-specific conditions that were specific to conditions that were specific to social equity applicants, fee deferrals, and access to industry investment funds should those funds become available. There will be a number of recruitment and outreach that would have to happen in order to make this happen quickly and to run in line with what the state is doing. In addition, there would be an opportunity for the department to bring along a management analyst who would serve as our social equity program coordinator. In addition to the framing of the program, within the recommendations, there is an instruction to the CIO and city attorney to report back on the ability for social equity applicants to have fee deferrals. And then there's also an instruction for various city departments to establish a request for qualifications that would allow the Department of Cannabis Regulation to move forward with these program developments. In addition, there is a request to the city attorney with the assistance of the Department of Cannabis Regulation and CIO to present a draft ordinance that would establish a community reinvestment and benefit fund that would be administered by the Department of Cannabis Regulation.
Okay, questions? Mr. Weezer?
Yeah, item, so that's your conclusion on item three, the amendments? Mr. Chair, I wanted to make an amendment to item, on the fourth recommendation for item three, where it establishes a community reinvestment fund. And we want to ask that language within the draft ordinance establish a youth development and education, that youth development and education are priorities for the community reinvestment fund investments or other revenue opportunities in neighborhoods most impacted by prior cannabis regulations. And request the city attorney add language to define youth development and education as inclusive of programs and supports for children and youth from 0 to 18 years old. We could make that amendment to your amendment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yeah, that makes sense. Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And I want to join my colleague, Councilman Weezer, in the suggested change. I wanted to make sure we were super, super clear in this social equity program, which I think is groundbreaking and exactly what City of Los Angeles and beyond should be doing. But one of the recommendations that talks about the one-to-one ratio, I want it to be a little more clear than the language we see here. We've got a painful recent history where we set goals for social equity programs for local hiring, and the local hire or the local contracting is a goal. And often the goal isn't met, and the project continues to go forward. And everybody kind of goes, oh, well, well, we tried. And we don't want that to be the case with this programming. And so with respect to the recommendation around the one-to-one match, I requested the city attorney with the assistance of the Department of Cannabis Regulation write an edit to the draft regulation so that the amount of social equity program license be consistent with the number of license processed during the priority processing phase at a one-to-one match. And only upon realizing this match so the general application phase begin. And so we'd ask that that language be as precise as we can to make sure everybody's got an interest in making sure the social equity program works.
All right. Okay, so on this item, let me just direct the clerk without objection. Let's adopt the recommendations and amendments by Mr. Weezer and Mr. Harris-Dawson, recommendations from the chair, recommendations from this committee.
And that would be for item three, sir?
Yes, that would be for items three. That ought to address items one through three.
Okay, just for clarification, for items one through three, we are adopting the recommendations submitted by the chair, and then for item three, we're adopting the recommendations submitted by the chair plus the recommendations by council members.
Weezer and Harris-Dawson. Yes. Okay, so ordered. Thank you. Okay, so now what, I still have two items. Mr. Herman, you have a minute on items four and five. Mr. Herman, you want to speak? Items four and five.
Regarding the racist of Los Angeles, Herman Jason Wesson is a racist.
Is that on the agenda? No, 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 you're going to stay on the agenda. No, 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 you're going to stay on the agenda. 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 Last time I'm going to say that. You want to sit down? Do you want to, do you want to give testimony? Then stick, he gets one minute. One minute.
And I still have general public comment.
No, you have just this going, you have your one minute.
Talk to you, Herman.
Okay, your off-comment, your public, your public comment is over. Show him his seat. Show him his seat. Thank you. Thank you. So now let's vote on items four and five. Mr. City Attorney, did you want to chime in? Yeah, because don't humor him. Let's vote on items four and five. On item four, we'll adopt the CLA report as amended. Item five will adopt the CLA report and resolution. So without objection, so ordered. Mr. Clerk, is there additional business before this body?
No, sir, that clears.
Okay, then this meeting is adjourned.